Okay, we're good to go. All right, good evening, everyone. Call tonight's meeting to order for, let's see. What is the date today, the 10th, right? Mr. Metz, if you'd call the roll.
Sam Cornwall. Roger Daniel.
Here.
Greg Immerick.
Here.
Jeremy Lucchinas. Paul Nanny.
Here.
Todd Moore.
Here.
And John Langkorn. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, next on our agenda this evening is our minutes from February the 8th, 2023. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to review the minutes. Any revisions, corrections for Mr. Metz? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Todd Moore.
Yes.
Paul Nanny.
Yes.
Greg Immerick.
Yes.
Roger Daniel.
Yes.
Sam Cornwall.
Yes.
That brings us now to our first case of the evening, preliminary development plan, a request by applicant Philip Brandon for approval of a preliminary development plan to construct 20 single-family homes at 2701 Central Avenue. Before we get started, need to swear, Mr. Metz. You swear the testimony. You're about to give the board the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. So tonight before us, we have a request by applicant Philip Brandon from Brandon Homes for approval of a preliminary development plan to construct 20 single-family homes at 2701 Central Avenue, also known as parcel ID Q653104300030. The property is a total of 6.7264 acres. The project will need approval by city council for the planned development, map amendment, and zone change also. The property, the subject property is currently zoned R3 medium-density residential district. Per the Middletown Development Code, the purpose of the R3 medium-density residential district is to provide for moderate-density, single-family residential uses in an urban setting, which are served completely by public infrastructure adequate for the applicable density of the development. Right where the red star is, is the project site. The applicant proposes a planned unit development that will feature 20 single-family homes at 2701 Central Avenue that are built to suit with lots, lot widths ranging from 50 to 95 feet. Per the Middletown Development Code, the purpose of the planned development, or PD, district is to provide an opportunity for creative and flexible lane development. Where a base zoning district will not accommodate the proposed development, but where such development will further the purpose of this code and the goals and policies of the master plan. The planned development district is designed to allow for deviations from certain zoning standards that would otherwise apply, if not contrary, to the general spirit intended in the Middletown Development Code. The comprehensive plan, lane use map, designates this property as a special interest area. The, there are eight special interest areas that require more in-depth lane use recommendations. These areas are addressed individually in the development opportunities chapter of this plan. That'll be on the next page. Here's the current site, just on the very edge. So from our comprehensive plan, there is the vision. The vision of the Central Avenue corridor is a flourishing neighborhood-scale, commercial corridor district that is walkable and a destination location for the city. This corridor is envisioned to continue movement from the downtown that serves and receives support from the surrounding neighborhoods. The corridor has two large-scale redevelopment opportunities through reimagining the variety of school sites, Roosevelt and Lincoln, and into a premier mixed residential development background. The Central Avenue corridor consists of 40 acres of small-scale commercial and office uses and includes the furnished lots along Central Avenue from North University Boulevard to the west of the old Roosevelt School site, moving east. The site serves as a neighborhood business district to the residents of Central Avenue, Central Middletown, and has an access gateway to the city's east side. This corridor is home to popular restaurants, nightlife, specialty shops, personal service establishments, and a convention, convenience store. It also is close to the city's Highland Historic District and newly renovated City Sunset Park. Would like to note that the zoning over here is B2 and B3 within this area, and then it slowly transitions back into residential. Here's the proposed site plan, showing the 20 homes, 95 feet wide, with the lots facing central. As you come into the neighborhood, the lots 20 to 14 and 5 to 11, I believe, are 50 feet wide, with 13 and 12 being quite larger. There is a walking path that would lead you from Central Avenue down the street, back into Sunset Park, through the detention and open space. There are a variety of homes that are being proposed at this site. I will go through them slowly. Please stop me if you have any questions. Per the Middletown Development Code, Table 1226-1, notice requirements, public notice was published in the paper and letters were sent to all property owners within 200 feet of the property. All letters and emails that were received were forwarded to the planning commission. Cities Internal Development Committee reviewed the proposal. City Engineering Department, the construction plans need to comply with the engineering manual of design. Review criteria for the preliminary development plan and zoning map amendment. The following criteria shall serve as conditions that should generally be satisfied before the approval of the preliminary development plan and zoning map amendment. The proposed development is consistent with the master plan, other adopted city plans, and the stated purposes of this code in Section 120407B15. The proposed development is necessary or desirable because of changing conditions, new planning concepts, or other social or economic conditions. The proposed development will not be detrimental to present and potential surrounding uses, but will have a beneficial effect that could not be achieved as well as under other zoning districts. The proposed development will promote public health, safety, and general welfare. The proposed development is not likely to result in significant adverse impacts upon the natural environment, including air, water, noise, stormwater management, wildlife, and vegetation, or such impacts will be substantially mitigated. The preliminary development plan has been transmitted to all the agencies and departments charged with the responsibility of review. The proposed development has provided evidence of assured access, i.e. access agreement with the neighboring property owner, et cetera, to the development site upon submission of the preliminary development plan application. That ends my staff report, and the applicant is here.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Metz before we open the public hearing? This is a public hearing. Please come forward if you wish to speak in favor of the proposed development. Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
Phil Brandon.
You swear the testimony. You're about to give the board the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you, sir.
All righty. Thank you, distinguished board, for having us. Thanks for the community that's come out to participate. This really is a culmination of a two-year discussion that really started with the desire to do something incredibly unique for Middletown. So we're really excited to kind of get you guys jogged in on really where the conversation started and where we landed out at. I think it's something that the community can be proud of and certainly something that we're proud of. So for the purposes of my presentation, I really want to spend a little bit of time introducing the general public to Brandon Homes, spend some time going through some of the in-depth research that we really did to make sure what we were presenting not only fit into the neighborhood, but really accentuated the neighborhood. And then we'll go into some of the Roosevelt Site Development Plan, what we're actually proposing for the site. And if the board sees it as appropriate, I'd love to open it up for Q and A to the board and the general community, too. I know there'll be an opportunity for public comment. So first, starting with a little bit about Brandon Homes. We're a little bit unique. I am very lucky to be able to do my passion every day I wake up. Home building is a passion for us. And it just so happens that we made it into a business. And we've had a long legacy, the family, of really providing, not only in town, but more broadly, really quality housing stock. We always say, we go to market with three different points. The first of those points is quality. Everything we do leads with quality, whether it's our construction specs and not, you know, conferring to the industry standard of despecking homes and removing less and less and less to the materials we use, to some of the architectural designs that we employ. Quality is number one for us, and that's what we lead with every day. Number two is design. To see a Brandon home is to see something unique. We take pride in that. And so not only are we coming with a new perspective from an aesthetic, but also a perspective with making sure that there's a functional and cohesive flow to every plan that we're putting into the market. And then lastly, affordability. On average, we come in about 10 to 20% lower than our competitor, while still offering the client more. There's tons of standard features that come in our homes. We know what it takes to build a beautiful home, so we include that standard, whether it's nine-foot ceilings, granite countertops, hard-surface floor, whatever you may have. More broadly, I think it's important to note our impact on this community for those who might not be familiar. And so we've been a proven partner here in Middletown. I am proud to say I'm a Middletown alum. I'm from Middletown. When I decided to invest in my business, I decided to do that here in Middletown because I saw a real need for the community. And so over 100 homes produced here in Middletown. We've recently invested $1.5 million in marketing space, in office space here in the local economy, in the local area. 10% of our profits are donated here locally. And then also, the impact that we've had on sitting on various different philanthropic boards or city leadership boards and really being able to advise from a real estate perspective. So this is just to say that we've been championing change here in town for a long time, and we plan to continue to do that. And this, this project, I think, is the first of many things that we plan to do. Kind of getting into some of the general context of how we got here. That was an incredibly important part about our discovery, starting with the design and not the profit. And so as you go down the central corridor, there's certain things that are apparent. Every home is different, and that's pretty cool, right? Not only is every home different and boasting its own architectural design, it's also important to note that there is some consistency, right? The consistency of, you know, the craftsman style is marketed by the A examples, or the traditional, or we all know in Middletown, we love our bungalow and Cape Cod homes. You know, all of these, these styles are different, and you're not going to see a lot of repetition, but you are going to see consistency. And that's something, as we were designing what we were going to put forth as a plan, it was important for us to really keep that in mind. Then we went to, okay, well, how, how could this be structured? How could we make highest and best use of this land to make a project that's financially viable, but that honors their surrounding neighborhood? And so the first thing we looked at are the, the immediate surrounding area. It was very apparent to us, what stuck out was on Central Avenue, all of the lots fronting the Central Avenue, they're larger lots, right? You know, the median width of those lots being about 60 feet. For the cross-sectioned streets, the interior lots, they were more modest, right? The average of those lots being 50 feet. So that's what we set as our floor, right? And our intention was to build upon that going up. One of the cool things that somebody on the team found from an original development perspective was the original plans for the land. And so this land actually was supposed to have a narrow street called Melissa Drive that would have connected to Sunset Park with some really itty-bitty lots as marketed in Exhibit 2.1, the B side, and then larger lots on Lot A with an access drive to the rear. So it's kind of cool to see what was originally planned for this land before eventually the school board purchased the land and constructed the Roosevelt Junior High School that eventually became the elementary school that I actually went to, and then, you know, was, you know, further demolished. And so all of that, we kind of really took into account, right? How are we building on top of this? And that's why we landed on the Preserve at Roosevelt Bridge. More broadly, one thing I'll say about this is every time we design a community, we set what we call design principles. These are what we call our North Star. What are some of the things that are king for us to really be able to honor? The first is honor legacy. And I'll go into more of that here in a second. Second is the preservation of character. How are we preserving the character in the immediate area? Also, how are we giving Middletown a leg up to start building for the future and building for a type of housing stock that is going to attract folks? A fun fact, all of our market inventory that has been placed on the market, not only has it moved incredibly fast in town, demonstrating the incredible need, but 95% of those folks are coming from external areas seeking out quality housing and finding out that Middletown is an incredible community to start a family in. So we want more of that behavior. First and foremost, honoring legacy. So this is one of the things, I think, anybody who's lived in this town understands the most incredible part of the town are the people that are in it. We've had some incredible local heroes. And so instead of us leading with a, a street name and a dedication name, we're actually going to involve the community in that and having a voting ceremony in which we figure out what influential neighborhood do we actually want to name this street after. All throughout the homes, there are some beautiful neighborhood amenities like a bike path and a pond. Those will all have trees and monuments placed, and those will be dedicated to local heroes as well. So that's that piece about honoring the legacy. The preservation of character, especially for those who are immediate to the surrounding there, is probably the most important piece and where we spent most of our time. One of the things, as I said, when we did our research, there was a lot of diversity. We want to continue. Nobody wants the cookie cutter, right? I think we start to see people rejecting that notion more and more. It's profitable, but it's not desirable. And so we're coming in and we're doing something really bold, and we're saying, this is going to be a custom home community. We already have 12 plans, of which we'll see some of those tonight, that are earmarked for this community. And that's just a starting point. Any one of our 30 plans that we offer to the general public will be available on this site as long as it meets within the appraisable basis for the community. And so what that's going to do, I mean, you could imagine, if you already have 12 elevations and you only have 20 lots, the diversity of housing stock in this is going to be pretty incredible. We also have what we call Studio B, which is some of the marketing investment that we, I referred to earlier, that's here in town, in which customers have thousands of options. It's not choose vinyl color A and B and C. It's choose hardy color whatever, right? They're coming in here, they're designing these homes to really fit within what they're wanting their home to be, to accentuate their personality and how they want to live in their space. The lot structure, this is super important. So between 50 to 69-foot lot widths in the interior of the community and between 95 feet to 105 feet on the exterior. This far surpasses those medians that I kind of alluded to. Again, fitting within what is already there and making sure that what we're developing is responsible and appropriate. Lastly, is the breathtaking elevations. You'll get a chance to see some of those. We spent a lot of time figuring out, how do we take a modern take on what's there? How do we make craftsmen modern? How do we make bungalow modern? And so that's what you'll see. And so obviously, it'll give a facelift to a lot of the community and surrounding area, but it'll also look and tie into some of those beautiful homes that are already around there. Built for the future, we'll spend a little bit of time on the next slide, really going through what that means. All of our plans, we spent an incredible amount of R and D understanding what do buyers really want? How do we design an ultra-functional floor plan that attracts folks by addressing their needs? So around building for the future. Floor plan designs, one thing I always say is we, we really do like to hear from our customers, past and present, and also the general public. So we took thousands of data points nationally and married that with our own local research and insight survey that we do annually to understand what are people wanting. And none of this is going to be surprising. However, it's important to note that a lot of this stuff is things that there's an incredible lack of in town right now. Familial housing. That means, you know, three to four bedrooms at a minimum. That way, you can start and grow your family. Multi-generational housing. How can I live in one house when I'm 40 and also when I'm 80? Handicap-accessible housing is something we really struggle with here in this community. Building housing that is appropriate and fits everyone's ability profile and has, is inclusive in that nature. And then energy efficiency. How are we doing our part in, in saving some money in the process on those utility bills? Those are what our, our consumers are saying are needs. And those are things that we are addressing at a minimum in every single one of these plans. But then there are these desires. Your open concept, your pantry, your custom finishes, rejecting that notion of cookie cutter. Home offices. More and more people are working from home post-COVID. Laundry room, and then, of course, outdoor living. Bringing the continuity of that space indoor, outdoor. And so as we think of this, these are the, this is the rubric that we measure every plan against, and this is what's going to allow Middletown to really be able to attract a particular type of buyer that sees housing as the primary need in the community as the secondary need, so they can come and fall in love with the community that we all fell in love with. I will say, this community is very rich with what I call Mill Houses. I actually grew up in one. Three-bedroom, one-bathroom Cape Cod, made for an interesting Sunday morning, getting ready for church with one bathroom. But it's one of those things where you think about functional obsolescence, right? You know, that's not a desire profile that many buyers have today, but that's the inventory that we have to support our more strategic initiatives in town. That's why housing is so important. Okay, so this is an opportunity for us to kind of go through more broadly. I'll move through these pretty quickly and hitting the high notes. But orienting us to the slide, it's, the information for the plan is up top, and then that rubric that I'm talking about. We're measuring ourselves against our own rubric that we set. We also notate whether or not this is going to be available in the exterior larger lot or the interior more modest lots. This is our Bristol plan. There'll be more about this plan later. I'm really excited for the community to really be able to get in and experience our product. And so that being said, we'll get, get into that. But this is our Bristol model. It's four bedrooms, three bathrooms, 2,500 square feet, two-story. We call this the traditional farmhouse. So again, bringing in that traditional flair, but updating it, right? You'll see that the pediment, and I don't know if I'm able to... The pediment area over here with these more ornate, traditional features. But the actual black windows juxtaposed against some of the black trim and the white siding really helps to elevate and kick that architectural up. One of the things that you'll see that's very expensive, however, you know, again, when you lead with design, it's something that you do, the architectural, the architectural features of the home. You're seeing the 12, 13 roof pitches. You're seeing the dormers. You're seeing all of these architectural elements that are really elevating the home. You're seeing the board and batten, hardy board on the front of the home. These are things that are really pulling out the architectural design of the home, and is very important. So this will be a home that's available in exterior lots because of the side width profile of it. First-floor master is available on this particular plan. So when we start to talk about that multi-generational living, this one does that really, really well. Our Briarwood model. This is the modern Cape Cod. So this is a ranch-style model, three to four bedrooms, two bathrooms, 1,650 square feet. Again, boasting a lot of that bold architectural design. Of course, a first-floor master, if it's a ranch. This is available in the exterior lot. The Ashford. This is one of the first homes available in the interior lot. Again, coming in with some really, really bold architecture. Four bedrooms, two and a half bath, first-floor master, a little over, a little under 2,300 square feet. Again, checking all of our boxes that we're measuring ourselves against. The Ivy, a really bold plan employing, and again, a lot of these renderings are just our inspiration, right? Our, our homeowners are going to have the ability to customize these homes. But leading with a little bit of boldness in this plan, mixing craftsmen and Tudor together, employing a variety of different building materials like shake, like the hardy board and batten, the hardy horizontal lap siding, wide-faced cedar mill, to make that pop, to bring that out, employing different things like masonry. It really makes for a bold plan. Four bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms on a first-floor master, available in both exterior and interior lots. Our Gardenia plan is what we call our modern craftsmen farmhouse. So you guys are starting to kind of really see the trend in these houses. Very different, but very consistent. Available in the exterior and interior lots, first-floor master. Four to five bedrooms. This plan is really, really cool because not only does it have two-story ceilings in certain areas, which is a more luxurious feel. Actually, all of the homes that I just talked about have 18-foot ceilings, and I probably should have mentioned that. So you're seeing the interior luxurious features, but you're always also seeing some functions for, you know, larger families, three, three-plus kids, and still ability to have a home office or an additional guest bedroom. So a lot of versatility in this plan. It's one of my favorite. The Aster. This is a two-story, what we call craftsmen cottage. So it has a very whimsical feel, coming in with some of these corbels up at the top to make this pop. Again, having the dimensionality of having four different siding materials up on the front, different colors really to make it pop, giving it that, that flair. Four bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms, a little over 2,100 square feet, two-story. Again, that is a first-floor master. The Chelsea model is our quintessential two-story ranch. It's one of our crowd favorites. Three to four bedrooms, two to three bathrooms, 2,100 square feet, available in the exterior lot. Again, checking all our boxes, first-floor master there. The Hawthorne. So you'll also see smaller plans, but the smaller plans, just because we go smaller doesn't mean that we need to delve down into some of that design, right? So you're still seeing a really bold design perspective with this home. We call this Coastal Craftsman. This was a part of a collection that we did when we looked at some of the houses in Charlotte and was really moved and inspired by that, wanted to bring that up here, up north. So you're seeing a lot of that coastal classic with the, the metal roof, some of the pitching and the simplicity of the front of the structure, but still mixing with a variety of different materials and making it pop. Again, that's three bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms, 1,700 square feet. This is going to allow us to reach and be inclusive to multiple price range. So you'll see probably most of the square footage is, the median is probably going to be upper, you know, lower 2,000s, but we're really going to be inclusive and make sure that we have something for everybody, to the best of our ability, of course. That being said, one of the things that I always say is the best way to really measure somebody is seeing the product. And so one of the things that we really want to do is invite the community in. We will have two open house, light cocktail, light refreshment will be served. We have a model in Carlisle in the community that's in its closed-out phase. It's our Avon model. Both of these models are actually going to be available in this community. So it's a good opportunity to really see some of what's going to be out there. And so the first will be next Wednesday, 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at Mount Builder at our model. The, the second one is the one I'm most excited about. It is a pop-up model, so it'll just be a temporary model up for three months here in Middletown. Fully furnished. It's our Bristol model, and so it's actually... This model right here is being constructed right now in Middletown. Will be available for open into the public. And really, this is our intention to really show exactly how stunning these homes are, how luxurious these homes are. And so there'll be a similar open house that will take place June 14th on a Wednesday, 3:00 to 6:00, trying to be inclusive of us working folks. And that'll be on Rosedale Road. It's under construction. We ask the public not bounce around the house because it's open job site now for safety reasons. I don't want to pressure test my general liability insurance. But we want to open this up to the public. We really want to be inclusive to folks and really show folks just the craftsmanship and how much pride and passion we take in what we do. That being said, if it's appropriate, I'd, I'd open it up for questions. If not, I don't know if that's appropriate, if I take questions?
Well, we'll have to ask you questions first.
Oh, yeah, sure, sure, sure.
Well, first of all, good to see you again.
Yeah, it's good to see you.
You mentioned Roosevelt School. I was a raccoon myself.
Yeah.
It's interesting to be sitting here at a table, talking about the old Roosevelt School, so that's...
Exactly.
Um, I do want to say that as I looked at the plan, um, I thought you did a great job with trying to integrate into the neighborhood. Uh, the various uh, types of designs. I thought it was also interesting that you provided many options. As opposed to a cookie cutter approach. Um, I do, uh, I did see some of the construction on Rosedale. I've been by that site before. And I do believe that's going to be a very nice home when that's done. Um, so I wanted to ask you a couple of questions as we get into the details about the plan itself. The um, as I understand, when we're looking at development standards, this being a preliminary development hearing. Um, that this particular plan, um, it will not have plans for vinyl siding. Am I correct about that? The standards that you've set there, hardy board, brick, hard, uh, uh, there's no vinyl siding that I've seen in that plan. Is that, do I have that correct?
So what we focus on, we actually call it value engineering, right? So my front of the house, you don't want to see vinyl siding on the front of the house, right? Um, and so we're coming in with those premium materials, however, um, we have to remain, you know, price approachable. So our intentions is to have every home actually be wrapped in full hardy. Um, however, it'll be an option to upgrade into that. And so base will be the front of the home will have hardy siding on it and masonry, a particular portion of the home will be masonry. Um, the side of the homes, which is not visible, um, will have vinyl. And the house on Rosedale, if you guys ride by it, that is exactly how that house was done. Um, again, vinyl on the side, hardy on the front, and I think you'll start to notice that it's the front that really matters.
Now, question about density itself.
Sure.
That's always a question that we have here with the planning commission. It's been a challenge with some of the new developments as they've come through.
Sure.
Um, in making, you know, this decision, the, the side year, the side setback being five. Um, preliminary development plan, I think calls for the stand, the current standard, I think is seven, if I remember correctly, R three is seven for side yard setback. Um, and with plan unit development, obviously, there's some flexibility to meet some requirements there. Um, talk us through just that process of arriving at twenty, just in the density itself. As opposed to saying, hey, we'll meet that seven uh, setback requirement.
For sure. And so I think it started with understanding the neighborhood, right? And what was consisted and how things were developed in that. Um, so that was the core point. And then we moved into when you're dealing with such a small, I mean, twenty houses sounds like a lot, but it's really a small quantity of homes. Um, and then the cost of improvement that you are smoothing over as many homes. It's of course advantageous to get as many as you, you can for a, a project this small to make it viable. Um, running a, a, a new proposed road is a very expensive improvement. Now, one of the things that I will say, there's a variety of different widths. Obviously, the lots towards the back of the community are larger. Uh, ranging from fifty-five to sixty-nine, um, the front lots are conforming. Um, and so those all are ninety-five to a hundred and five. So what we're really talking about is these ten lots that are in um, scope that are fifty feet. Um, these, if you look at the surrounding areas, believe it or not, there are lots as small as thirty-five feet wide, kind of blows my mind. But um, we, we, the big thing that we try to do is make sure that we have homes that can fit within those buildable setbacks. Uh, we know that, um, you know, that is an appropriate amount of space to really be able to go through, um, and not be too close to your neighbor. And one of the things too is, is the lots are a lot longer, right? Um, and so you're actually looking at a depth of about two hundred feet instead of the classic a hundred and thir- a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty feet that are in the surrounding area. And so I think that there, there's this notion of correlation between density and quality. And I think uh, we've seen too many projects in Mason and Westchester uh, to, to be able to debunk that, right? Uh, where how do we create a, 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 a product that leads in everything that a client wants? And still provide them a really nice sized yard where it's palatable to people who want to come in and buy. Um, but also remaining, you know, financially viable as a project, um, is, is really, really important. But we did actually, I mean, we had about ten proposals on, on, on the table at one point. Um, this was the one that made the most sense as we actually uh, did the improvement costs and modeled over the numbers.
One more question.
Sure.
Um, so we were, uh, sent a letter from a resident asking um, about. Some, I don't want to say just dirt alone, but there was a former track behind Roosevelt School as you're aware.
Yeah.
Could you just give us some information uh, about the stability of that, or maybe what the future plan would be as you construct new homes on the site?
Yeah, so that's a part of the development process. We do what we call a geotechnical um, survey. They come out and they actually will, will take bore samples to understand the density, um, to make sure that we can get our fifteen hundred PSF compaction we need to place a foundation on it. Um, in those cases in which we're unable to achieve that, which it should not be a challenge. Um, it's very common to do an engineered track pad to where we can actually come in, stabilize the earth, do some compaction on that. It's an expensive process. Um, so ideally, you would like good solid virgin um, dirt. Most of these homes, um, the intention is for them to be basements. So we're actually going at least six to seven feet subgrade. Um, so um, at this point, there is no concern. Um, that we're not going to be able to either encounter virgin soil or uh, we don't encounter um, to create our own engineered track pad. But it's a great question.
Well, you, you sort of uh, raised the topic, but do you have a comparison then between the square footage of your larger lots and your smaller lots?
Yeah, and so square footage wise, I did submit um. A, i- it's not as glamorous as the, the marketing version of it, but it has the building pad on it. Uh, which will give you an idea of the buildable area for each lot, um, and then also will give you an idea of some of the setbacks proposed, um, so that is available. Yes, sir.
Um, well, I'm guessing that the uh, the difference on the square footage isn't nearly as much as it appears when you look at the frontage.
Sure.
So I just thought maybe you might have some numbers.
Yeah, um, so I can just kind of broadly share, so for the first lots, one through four. You're looking on the average about fourteen thousand square feet for the lot.
Okay.
Um, buildable area. And then as you get into some of those interior lots, you're seeing your more standard eleven thousand, twelve thousand square foot lots on the interior. Um, all the way down to um, the upper nine thousands. So obviously, there's a variety because there's varying lot widths. Not every lot is fifty foot wide. Some of them are fifty-five foot wide, sixty-five foot wide. But as a standard, I would probably say if we took the average of every single lot, it would probably be about sixty feet wide. Um, and two hundred feet deep would be the average. And so of course, you could, you know, add a calculator. I'm not going to do, it's too late to do head math right now, guys. But that would, that would allow you to arrive at uh, what I would probably say the median lot size would be. Yes, sir. So one of the, one of the things that we're proposing for the landscaping piece, um, I'm always reticent to um, lead for the homeowners on installing trees on their lot. Uh, just because of some of the long-term maintenance issues. And so of course, the covenants will not restrict fences. It will just regulate the type of fences. That way, we don't get things like, you know, chain, chain link fences that are unsightly that we wouldn't want to see in a community. Um, so we'll regulate the type of fence, but we will not regulate um, whether or not they can put up a fence like some communities. That way, they can actually have that privacy piece. I think that's important.
We also had a question about HOA. Is there a planned HOA?
That is, that's going to be a critical component of this. I think we've seen, especially in town. Um, we want a community that starts beautiful and stays beautiful, right? And that's, that's really the, the uh, portion of an HOA. And so a lot of those HOA guidelines, they'll obviously enforce a lot of the covenants and restrictions that we'll put in place. Um, but not only enforcing that, they'll also come and make sure that they can, they can, they can maintain that standard. Um, for different things like land use and um, there's all kinds of stuff that an HOA is gonna, gonna be governed, for sure.
Any other questions for Mr. Brandon?
I think I will, once we hear from everybody.
So price point's going to start in early three hundreds. Um, with some of those models, we're actually going to be able to pierce two hundred. Um, however, I would say three hundred to four hundred is really what we're targeting. There's a real need for uh, what we call business class housing in this community. Um, and so that's what we're targeting. Um, you know, if you're looking at the MLS right now, you're seeing between three to four hundred thousand dollars. I think there's some like ten listings that are available, uh, nine of which are pending. Um, and so there, that obviously demonstrates the real lack in that area. And we had an, we have a lot of homes concentrated in that one to two hundred thousand dollar range. And so these are going to be nicer homes and with some of the materials that we're leading with, um, they're going to have to be nicer homes.
Give it a question.
Yeah. Sure. So I think the challenge when you have so little housing, right? You know, when you think about a massive plan development, like, you know, it's a hundred and two hundred homes, um, you're smoothing that cost over a lot. Um, twenty homes is the point of viability. Um, there were other plans, of course, that we entertained as we were uh, running the gamut of, of making smaller lots on Central Avenue. Um, we didn't think that was appropriate, again, going back to our designer, uh, principle. So there was a plan, um, that typically in the design process, the engineer will float tons of ideas, right? And they're used to working with builders, developers who want to get as much as possible. Um, so there was a plan actually for, believe it or not, thirty lots on this subject site. It's not appropriate. Um, however, twenty is, is the point of viability, um, which we say, hey, this is the amount of houses that we need to make this work. Um, and even if you really think about losing one or two lots, um, you're, you're spreading fifty feet over um, thousand, a thousand feet. Doesn't really get you much more per lot. And so the incremental loss versus the incremental gain is not in balance. And so that's how we arrived at twenty.
I'd like to follow up on that question just for a moment. I was trying to do some rough math on this. Trying to look at if we were to reduce it to two homes. And I was trying to figure out, how do we get closer to that seven setback requirement that we have? And the way I calculated this out, it would basically be if we reduced those two houses. You're, you're either going to gain four feet on each side, which would take it from ten now towards the easement, five on each side, total of ten. To this fourteen, or you lose four, which we do under the current plan. Am I roughly in the ballpark there? So two houses to extend the side setbacks, so we're, to reduce the overall density between what we're looking at. So you'd have a, a larger space between the homes as opposed to what we have now. As the current plan calls for, R three is seven side yard setback. Your proposal would be five for a total of ten, five on each side. So there are narrow spaces between these homes. Um, those are the questions I often get as well about this particular development. And that's, it's a common concern, I think, in the community is about overall density. And we have opposing arguments on this. Folks, folks are saying, hey, the housing's moving one direction with having smaller homes on different lot sizes. I understand those arguments, but there does seem to be a great concern when you look at the overall housing stock about density. That question comes up over and over again on, on the board. But if you reduced, you know, two homes, or is the case then that you, you just believe it's not a viable option? Would you not be able to build two other larger homes potentially that would have more value as opposed to the smaller homes that you're proposing?
Sure.
With the, I think, fourteen lots inside? I can't remember the exact lots on the inside, but.
For sure. No, and it's a good question. And so again, um, that eighteen gets you beyond the point of viability. Um, and then trust me, I, I played with the numbers, right? Um, one of the things that I always say is we can get creative with inside of a box. Um, as a builder, we always say in the Dayton HBA, uh, we don't make the market, we just serve it, right? And there's only so much that we can go beyond it. One of the things that we could do is if we're concerned about the space between homes, um, we can take those building pads in. Um, so I can get, I can maintain a lot with, but still be able to increase the side setbacks. Um, and all of those plans that I just presented would still fit within that buildable area. Um, and so there is some wiggle room there to where we could still achieve that and not have to give up the density. Because I think the challenge is, um, we always say, let people choose for themselves. Um, you know, if the density is too much, people will elect out of those neighborhoods. I think we see as a general standard really at this point, um, that, you know, that the days of the hundred foot lots are challenging. When you're paying a thousand, um, you know, dollars per linial foot for improvement. Um, so it gets, it just, it gets real challenging. So if you erase that fifty-five foot lot, right? And let's just say it's a thousand dollars per linial feet for a foot, well, that's moved over the remainder of the lots. And so then we get into this affordability pinch, right? Um, it's not only just for us, right, to maintain profitability viability. Um, it's also to make sure that we can actually offer this to the public within a, a price range that's reasonable, that people will pay. Um, so it becomes challenging for sure.
I don't want to be too hard on you, but that same argument was given to us when we looked at the hospital side with two hundred and twenty-five homes.
Sure.
I certainly understand uh, from a builder's perspective and so.
Well, and, and, and I think the plans are fundamentally different, right? Um, they were proposing a builder-grade product uh, with high, high density. Um, we're proposing and, and there's, I mean, there's tons, if you think about um, the masonry requirement, the hardy board requirement, and just the, the architectural. They're per home, um, there's tons of money on that table, um, that we're saying, no, we're going to lead with a, a better proposal. So I, I do think that the, the proposals are fundamentally different, certainly. I would agree with that.
Yeah. Any other questions for Mr. Brandon?
Why the Roosevelt plot? I mean, I, I, I'm having deja vu a little bit to a year ago with what we went through. Why is that so, why is that the right spot for you to build these homes? And it seems like you're going to be, you're going to be tied on them as it is with just the twenty. Why not find a better lot to, to build fifty or something?
I think in Middletown, we are in a interesting uh, dilemma. Because we, we are, we're not coming and erecting homes out of cornfields. Cornfields are gone. Um, and so we're really thinking creatively about what land we have left in this town. Um, and not only what land we have left in this town, but uh, most of the opportunities we're going to encounter are redevelopment opportunities. Which is, this is not, this is a redevelopment opportunity. This was a, a piece of land that wasn't available twenty years ago, right? And so we're looking at what opportunities we have. Of course, there was RFQ, um, that was put out to the public and um, you know, a real desire for the city. To do housing here, and, and we responded to that RFQ with, with our best. Um, and so that's why Roosevelt, but certainly, um, you know, if they're, trust me, I, I got a, I got a, my eye on every large tract of land in Middletown. And um, as those opportunities roll up, you know, we'll definitely be taking them.
Just for context, while um, city council charged the city manager and staff with payments on the city owned properties. And putting those out and asking for um, proposals on those properties. And Brandon Helms had replied with a product and a project that staff felt was um, of high enough caliber to bring to planning permission and report on. And so it did start with city council, because this is a, this is actually a city owned property as opposed to some of the other properties that we've seen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brandon.
Of course, thank you.
We'll have some other questions before we move on.
Stick around.
Mr. Brandon?
Yes, sir.
Hold, hold on, sir. Well?
I, I saw your house out on Roseville Road.
Yes, sir.
Nice looking house.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you very much.
Um, I live, my, my house backs up to the property. I live at fourteen Kenwood.
Sure.
And this is, this isn't a beep, this is a question. Um, our houses on Kenwood and surrounding neighborhoods, my garage is set behind our houses. We have fences, um, you're lucky to see two yards down. We have fences, the, the garages, we have a lot of things that block, so you just can't see all the way down the street.
Sure.
Now, you have some very nice looking homes, and you're going to have twenty, well, basically four in the front. So you're going to have sixteen homes, because that property goes down like that.
Sure.
You're going to have sixteen homes, and you can have sixteen different homes, sixteen different paints, sixteen different colors. Sixteen different fences, sixteen different pools in the backyard, sixteen different decks. You can have all of that. And we have trees and things to block things. You're going to be sitting in a bubble there. Basically, nothing's going to hide anything. It, it, it's going to be right there. And I'm not against that. That's your challenge, because this project, you know, normally, a housing project of twenty houses can pick the property. Pick the environment, build the houses, and the environment comes back and surrounds the houses and works, it all works together.
Sure.
You have the challenge of, you don't get to pick the environment. You've had to build in a bubble, and these houses are going to sit in a bubble. And the fact that you say they're two or three hundred thousand dollars, that's terrific. I think it's wonderful because it keeps our value up. And um, it's, it's not such that they're a low-priced housing.
Yeah.
I don't deal so much with setbacks and this and that and whatever. I, I came because of something else, not because of trying to stop your project.
Sure.
But uh, how, how did you, how, how did you propose to, how did you propose, like I said? All these different homes, different fences, different this, different that, different all these other things. How do you, how, how do you, what do you think about that?
Thank you for that question, and, and it's a good question. And um, the fences you're talking about uh, came over time, right? And so um, we start a community, and a community makes their community their community. Um, my job is to set in guardrails, right? And that's where the HOA comes in place, where we don't have all of these crazy. And that's where the HOA comes in place, where we don't have all of these crazy different fences and, and styles of different going up. Um, so that's gonna be regulated. However, um, when Kenwood Drive was built, those fences didn't exist. Um, those came in time, right, to, for the need of privacy. Uh, where somebody said, hey, there's forty-five foot lot on Kenwood, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that. I'm gonna put a fence up though, cause maybe I don't wanna see my neighbor every single morning. Um, and so it, it's a call and response, right? Um, as a developer and a builder, I have to lead with the best product, right? Um, something that's gonna be palatable to the community. And I have to, have a responsibility, um, to make sure that whatever I'm proposing doesn't impair what you got going on on Kenwood. Um, and that's what we've proposed here.
Those will be trees and this and that.
Certainly.
Real, real quick, Mr. Moore, um, this is the style we'd like to have the Q and A. What I'd like to do is have the system come and swear in.
Yep.
And then, and then if we could do that sort of formality.
Yeah, I was gonna, I, I, I think that probably would be best. And I, I, before we do that though, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor at this point of proposed variant? So I guess we'll just do that format at this point. That means that you support the current development. You're speaking in favor, Mr. Brandon, moving forward, at least in some form, you speak in favor of what you're gonna do. Yes, sir.
Well, we still need him to swear in?
I'm gonna need to have your name and address, sir.
My name is, I'm at the dais.
Yep, swear in. And then we'll move to the other format and let folks to answer questions. I know there'll be a lot of questions. So just state your name and address for the record.
My name, and my name is David Brown. I live at fourteen Kenwood Drive in Middletown, Ohio.
You swear the testimony. You're about to give the board the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. So I hope you got it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. You can, you could either stand at the dais or you can, or either way, moving forward, would you rather have folks come and present here or come to the dais? Does it make a difference?
Well, traditionally, people who speak in favor of opposition would go to the dais. But since we're kinda having, kinda like a Q and A with the audience, I didn't know if that's the way you'd like to hold the meeting if it was, I was just suggesting for them to come, still to swear in as, um, as required and then have the Q and A, but.
Sounds good to me. Is there any other? Yeah. Uh, Andy, come forward, please.
Shall I sit down now?
No, sir, go ahead. Here's, folks, if I could, there's gonna be a lot of questions, okay? We all understand that everyone wants to get a chance to talk. Everyone will get a chance to speak. We have to keep this in an orderly fashion, so we can just pace ourselves a little bit differently as we move forward. Um, what we'll do, we'll let you speak. I'm gonna answer Andy's questions as well. We'll listen. And then moving forward, those will enter into a question and answer dialogue with Mr. Brandon. So go ahead, sir. You have a floor.
Well, could, could you possibly put that, um, plan of proposed with a how would you propose it? Right there.
Please speak into the microphone, please.
Or I need you to speak into the microphone.
Okay. I, I, I just, you know, when we first heard about this twenty homes, that's fine. One of the things that we read about in the paper, that I had a copy of the paper, was that they were gonna keep the access road. Um, and immediately I thought, there's an access road that runs from central, that bottom red line, that runs from, uh, central right down past that detention open space that's there now. It's been there a hundred years. And the thing of it is, is I've lived there twenty-five years, twenty-five years, we've had that bike path, uh, citizens walking down that path. Um, utilities, I've seen emergency vehicles down that path, but that's a, a, a biker, a walking path that's been there a long, long time that we're all used to. And, and that's my barrier between Sunset, between me and Roosevelt School. And for that plan to fit in, now you're backing right dead up against my property. And that barrier, that, that path that everybody's had, has been replaced with, now they're gonna walk their dogs down that proposed road. They're gonna ride their bikes down the proposed road. They're, they're going to, um, e- everything down the proposed road, go back to end of the cul-de-sac, make a right-hand turn, then make another left-hand turn, and take that back to Sunset Park. Now, I think for this project, if it wants to fit in, I think we need to keep our path that we have now that we're used to, that would make it fit in a little bit better. I mean, we've lived there for twenty-five years. I think we deserve a little bit of maybe something that, that, that path is well-used. I think that, that's, I, I would like to see that path stay. There's a, there's a lot of things that, that, that path that goes back around and back around, what you're gonna do is you're gonna take all those people that don't wanna walk down that proposed road through that new project, and that's not a bike path, it's not interrupted. Uh, and they're gonna be over on my street with their dogs and, and everything else, walking on the sidewalk or walking in the street, where you got a perfectly good bike path, right there that goes straight down to the park, that would keep them off there, and the path that's there now, it would be probably just as a, the pleasure of letting the citizens of those new homes walk down there. That's how I feel about that. Now, the main concern I have is the fact that I watched, when they built the project, when they built the project in Sunset Park, they took that dirt from Sunset Park, and they hauled the dirt from Sunset Park. I watched Majors in their trucks. They filled those dirt's up, filled the trucks up with dirt. And house number twelve, eleven, ten, nine, and maybe part of eight, seventeen, sixteen, fifteen, fourteen, and thirteen, there was a track back there that was a, a depression of five to six feet down and back up. They hauled all that dirt across that detention area and around, dumped those trucks, truck after truck after truck, and they took a bulldozer and spread it out. Fill dirt. I built a big deck for my daughter in Loveland and, and, uh, Hamilton County wouldn't let me set a six for six on fill dirt next to a house. Let alone, when I asked Mr., um, Metz, what kind of property's gonna be here? And he said, it's, it's, is it gonna be basement or, or, uh, slabs? And he said, the homeowner will get to pick. One of the things that was mentioned, I asked Mr. Metz about the, 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 the path down there, the access road, is that why didn't he stay? He said, well, the builder owns that property and he can do whatever he wants. I, I, that's where I disagreed. But the point of it is, this is the most important point. I'm, I'm not for stopping that project. I'm for it a hundred percent. But when they hauled that dirt from Sunset in the truck and that grader, smoothed that out so that depression's gone, now on the west side of it, there's still part that's down. That's fill dirt. And you can't build a house on fill dirt. And one of my comments was responded with, well, we're gonna test it. What is testing gonna do? Does somebody think God's gonna come down and touch it and make it compacted dirt? It ain't gonna happen. You run all the tests you want. I spoke to a couple other counties, and the thing of it is, is the middle, the city of Middletown represents me. This builder may be the nicest man in the world and built the finest homes, but the city of Middletown represents me. Now, um, Mr. Majors, who did the project, somebody paid him, I don't know whether it's the city or the, the state or whomever. That, if, if I lay my left hand up here and my right hand up there like that, my right hand is almost all fill dirt. You can't put ten homes on fill dirt. And if you think you can build basements down six feet and get into virgin ground, then you've got basements with fill dirt all around them. When the dirt's compacted, it sheds water. My house is about number seven on this side. I probably have the biggest house, and my garage has a, half the garage underneath the basement. I've got a sump pump underneath that basement. Water comes down that hill pretty quick and I get a lot of water. Now, what's sitting in that soup bowl down there that used to be a track is, is uncompacted dirt. Water's rolling down in there, and it's just sucking that up like a sponge. The thing of it is, is I think that somebody is responsible, I don't, and I think it's the city, that that, that, there's more than one way to compact earth, other than just jerk it all out and put it all back. But there's a science to it. And the other thing is that, that the road running down through the middle, you're coming down through the middle and all of a sudden you're dropping down five to six feet. Normally they, they, they'll go down three to four feet. When they, they'll build a road, you're not even down to virgin earth yet. So it's gonna cost you a small fortune to get from eighteen, seventeen, sixteen, fifteen, and the cul-de-sac, just to build that all back up. Uh, I, I talked loud because I have hearing aids, and I kinda hear myself. What's gonna be done about all of that fill dirt? How is that going to be corrected?
Sir, I think we have, I think we understand your question.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, we're gonna go ahead and move forward now unless there's anything else. I think we understand just the point.
That's all I got.
Thank you, thank you very much.
How will we get, how will I ever get an answer to that?
Well, we'll be, I'm sure, Mr. Brandon mentioned it earlier. We'll talk about it again tonight, I'm certain.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, please come forward. Swear you in?
Andy Brookler, three oh one DL, Alameda, Middletown, Ohio.
Uh, do you swear the testimony? You're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. Wow. It's been two years since I've been out at this podium with y'all, day and night. So I'm here to make comments and ask questions. Um, really, I think for me, two things resonate, local, heritage, history. That's three. You look what we went through with the old hospital site, national builder, came down here, tone was way different. It felt like it wanted to be an argument from day one. Brandon Holmes comes down here and has talked about the community, heritage, quality, right? That's not what we had at the hospital site. So that's a big change for me. The fact that he's a local builder from Middletown, he's got skin in the game more than a developer outside that's coming in. There's a lot of questions that people are gonna ask. We asked him about the hospital site. Valid question about compaction. I guarantee you, they've, they've heard a lot of this already. There's gonna be some answers that they gotta come out and answer our questions. Quality. You know, is it perfect? No. I would love to see full vinyl, n- full vinyl not allowed. Any vinyl not allowed, right? That'd be perfect. But there's economics here. We could sit here, and we did at the Highlands, and say, hey, we wanna build million-dollar houses on the hill. Is that really gonna make anybody money? Is people gonna buy million-dollar houses right now in Middletown? I would love it. So the compromise that I see is, compared to previous developers that we have worked with, is the idea of coming in with the front facade being hardy, that's, that's different. Sounds like somebody listened to past experiences to me too as well. Because it doesn't, I guarantee you, it doesn't economically make sense for Brandon Holmes to put four houses on Central. I bet he would love to put six, eight, more. But I think, I think there were some co- cons, common themes that came out of the last development that was proposed at the hill. How we make it make more cohesive to the neighborhood and maybe internally, let it be its own little smaller lot community. Oh, the other piece. It, it's interesting to see how developers are different. So if you look at like Ryan Holmes and Big National, D R Horton, all these big national hands, they have cookie cutter monopoly homes. They have a book you come from, pick it. Brandon Holmes comes and says, hey, I got sixteen property, or sixteen portfolios that you can choose from and tweak to your liking as an owner. Everybody that says, hey, I want paint colors, all this other stuff, that's what makes homes unique. If they're the same every time, we're complaining about that over in, you know, Bran, or Ryan Holmes or D R Horton, the cookie cutter, right? Lastly, the part that I thought was interesting is instead of alienating this neighborhood and making it closed off to itself, cause over on the Alameda where I live, people walk all day. They walk to Sunset, they walk all these neighborhoods. That's the nice thing about these neighborhoods, tree-lined streets, real beautiful community that we're all proud of. People walk it. People from outside of town come to walk these neighborhoods just because they feel it, the beauty of these homes and the character. I look at what they've done here is moving that path into the community is actually better than getting rid of it. They could say, nope, don't need it. That's to help the community. That has nothing to do with a developer. That's a developer looking at the community as a community, not just a project. So with that, I'm in favor. Again, I would love to see backloads on Central. That would, I mean, everybody knows me, if you heard me talk, I love backloads. It, if, there is no curb cuts on Central with front-facing garage, the main architecture detail being your garage door. There are garages back at the back that are backset from Central, but that, that, that would be a big game changer to me. But even with that, I still support this. Thank you for your time.
Okay, we're gonna switch the format now. So, Mr. Brandon, if you would like to come forward, and then as we have folks that want to speak in favor, just please come to the microphone here by Mr. Metz. I'll swear you in, and we can engage in some dialogue as we go forward. I'm not gonna set a time requirement because I'm trying to allow for a full discussion. However, let's try to keep our comments, uh, focused.
Do we just raise our hand to ask?
No, I have to swear you in for a public hearing. Yeah, that's a requirement.
And if I could, just a, address the gentleman's comments. I, I, I share your concern. Um, my thing is, um, I have a long career ahead of me. So putting, uh, homes on unstable soil is not the business. Um, one of the things I'd like to invite you to do is have a conversation with our engineer to understand what the development process looks like.
It's not so much, it's not so much your project.
Sure.
I'm not against any.
Sure, sure, sure. Yeah, yeah.
I'm against, and I've been around and I've built, and I'm not an expert, but I can still build a house.
Yeah, yeah.
I am against building homes on uncompacted property.
And we won't be doing that.
And once that's solved, it's yours, baby. Go for it.
Yeah, and so, well, good news, it's solved. So, uh, as, as a part of the process, what, what we do is we have to get geotechnical. Uh, and to your point, you're like, well, what does it test to? It educates us to the soil conditions that are there. It's scientific. It tells me how much is fill, how much gives us that fifteen hundred PSF that I need.
That is, that is, that is all neat, and I'm not gonna get in an argument with you.
Sure, sure, sure.
That's all neat and fine and understanding. But when you haul fill dirt in and you don't compact it properly, you can run all the tests you want, but you know that when they, when they dropped it in there, it's been there two years, it's not compacted soil. And if you go to the city of Middletown, if you go to Hamilton County, or you know what I'm talking about, they're not gonna let you build on, on, on fill dirt.
They're not. And so that, I guess that's the, the point that that test that we do is gonna tell us exactly the soil conditions. That's not the extent of the effort. Then we will have a, a set of recommendations by the engineers who are gonna be a part of this project. And they're gonna tell us what we need to do to be able to, to, to actually build and attain that fifteen hundred PSF that I need to place a footer down in the ground. There's a couple of different things that you do. Um, best case scenario is that you do get down to good soil. In your case, in your concern, you're saying we won't. Um, that's when you track and engineer a path. And so that's, that's, even if I, if I wasn't good intention, I would not be able to do that with the inspection processes that are in place for the construction of a new.
I understand those processes, but if you, if I'm talking too much.
Yeah, if I, if I may.
I'm talking too much for him, and I'm talking too much.
No, I was gonna say, the first, let, let me, let me just put a couple of things in perspective as we move forward tonight. This is the preliminary development plan. So what we're looking at tonight, conceptually, does this fit with the master plan? As Mr. Brandon presented, something that fits the intention of future development, the city's intentions as well. But it's gotta be consistent with master plan. We're looking at neighborhoods. But your question is certainly noted, and as we go into the next stage of this plan, where we get into final development plans, you simply cannot build homes on unstable land. There's, there's.
I'm just gonna ask you one question.
Yes, sir.
Are you prepared, if you have to, to dig the dirt out of that hole and compact the property?
Correct. That's all I need to process. You and I, I'm, I'm more than happy to really have you be a part of this process.
Have the city planning people seen that, that property?
Mr. Moore, I'm not gonna interrupt real quick.
Um, you're more than welcome to ask as many questions as you want. We just, Mr. Moore kinda set out a process of if you wanna speak, you'd come sit down, speak in the.
you'd come sit down, speak into the microphone, then you're gonna, you know, swear in, and there, there's a process. We gotta keep our meetings organized.
Well, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna beat a dead horse in the ground in this, he made his point and I've made my point and you made your point, so I'll just leave it alone. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, those wishing to ask questions, please come forward, I'm gonna swear you in, this will be the process that we follow. Please state if you're for. Just let us know your concerns, we're gonna swear you in, please sit by Mr. Metz, we're gonna swear you in. State your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, over here. You swear, state your name and address for the record.
My name's Lee Toman, I live at one seventeen Belmont Street.
You swear the testimony you're about to give to the board's truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So, I have a couple of questions for you. How long do you think this process will take?
So what we're proposing is actually, in order to get started in construction pretty quickly, the, the first one through four lots are conform to current zoning codes. And so, our intention is to start this project quickly and be able to use phase one, which is lot one through four, to build steam for the community, which should help us expedite the remainder of the community by a lot.
So do you, do you see it as the street goes in and then the four houses on Central? And then the subdivision, let's call it?
Close, so we'll do the four houses, then the street, and then the subdivision will follow. 'Cause what allow, that would allow us to do, we'll have a model home on lot three. And so, that model home will be used to sell out the remainder of the community. The intention is, and to answer your question, I'd have to be able to predict the volume of sales. We have, we feel very optimistic from the market research that we've done, that selling is gonna happen quickly.
Okay.
We have the capacity to be able to support those, those builds and get them up pretty quickly.
Will you sell just lots and, and let people decide if they wanna build on there? I mean, can the lot, if, let's say I win the lottery and I want to, I want to buy twenty, nineteen and eighteen and build my house on nineteen and keep twenty and eighteen as my yard? Is that an option?
That's not typically an option with a community this small, we've done that actually at the first open house that you'll be able to go to. We did some of that to where folks could buy the neighboring lot if they wanted a bigger lot. In this particular community, given just a small number of lots, we really do wanna be able to maximize the offering to the community. And so, initially, that, that would not be something that we would pursue.
And this is for you guys. The stormwater issue. My house backs up onto where the pool used to be, it sits up on the hill. And when it rains really hard, long, even short, I was told when the park was done and we passed the tax issue for stormwater and the drains, that that drain that runs across, I'm gonna call it an alley, it's just a little access road, thank you. That fills up and takes a couple of days to drain. And so, they said that they would do something about that because it's tied into Bull's Run and that water system, but that never was addressed. And then if we build all of these, and like you were saying, the old tennis courts is the detention and open space, is that gonna make more water come through there? Is that, is that gonna be more for me?
I can let you answer that, but also from a city perspective, I'm sure maybe James could touch on this, but as part of the long-term control plan that City Council and the city of Middletown is moving forward with, we're also working on a large project that's actually downtown on Main Street, we've seen plans for it, it's a detention basin, it goes all the way that far. So, the, the Bull's Run detention and the detention at Sunset are all gonna tie into an eventual basin that's gonna go down Main Street down there, and that's gonna further alleviate some of these stormwater issues. It's part of the, the, uh, plan that we were, uh, the EPA's plan.
So you think the drain that's in that access road will eventually be tied where it's supposed to go?
That's the hope, that some of those, that some of those issues are alleviated by the completion of the long-term control plan. I mean, I'm not an engineer and I'm not, I mean, that would be a question for the city engineer, but I know from a, from a city leadership perspective, those are the things that we've been working towards. And the downtown basin should have something to do with that. And then if you wanna speak specifically to detention and open space here and how that, as part of the development, can factor into some of those stormwater tensions.
Certainly, certainly, and so, I mean, that's a really good question, it's something we spend a lot of time. And so, as a part, the, the good thing is, there's a lot of codes to protect against this, and that's detention ponds. There's a calculation that, that's done to, to figure out how much impervious structure is gonna be. What's impervious structure, right, rooftop, pavement, cement? Because that is much more efficient at wicking water than a vegetative buffer like grass that would absorb it. And so, the general rule of thumb is anything that's collected on the site has to be detained on the site, and then there's a metering system, so that, that detention pond will fill up and it will meter out into the actual stormwater system.
So you're saying that's gonna be a pond?
Yes, ma'am. It's gonna be, yeah, it's a detention pond, yes, ma'am. And so, I mean, that's, unfortunately, and it, it's an expensive improvement to make, but that every subdivision that you'll see more than likely will have a detention pond. Some detention ponds don't retain much water, some do, depend, depending on how much water is being collected. But the point that I'm making is, it should actually probably help what you're experiencing because it's detaining the water, that's the point of it. And it's metering it out into the actual city infrastructure at a degree upon rate that, you know, folks who get paid a lot more money than I do get to determine.
Can you swim in it? Can you swim in the detention pond? We don't have a city pool, so. Can you make it that we can swim in it?
And is there an advantage to having this detention in open space closer to the detention spaces at Sunset? And do those from an engineering standpoint tie together in terms of the decision to place it where you have?
We look for the lowest spot in the land, because everything has to fall to it. So, you can't see on this, but there's a more technical plan that shows the stormwater basins that would be in the street. And so, typically, that's how we will determine the placement, where does it make sense? It just so happened that this was a pretty low block of the land and it was also something to be your house and it's a workout. One of the other things I'll say too is, the, there was a lot of fall over to, I'm drawing a blank, the street that is over to the left, if you're looking at the subject site, which I believe is Belmont, which is probably where you, you live. This should help with that a lot, because all of that water kinda dies into that point right now. If you look at topography, this, this is not a topographic view, but it, it would show you the fall kinda does barrel to your yard if you're in this back right corner, which whoever Calvin is probably has a good time collecting stormwater. So, that should really help with that and being able to detain that water that we're collecting. There is an argument that could have been made not to have a detention pond because the Roosevelt School had a lot of impervious structure. So we could've come to the table and said, well, hey, we're not putting any more impervious structure than this massive school building that used to be here. We didn't go that route because we know it's the responsible thing to do, and that's collect the water. Obviously, you could imagine hogging out tons of dirt and then putting in that metering system, it's really expensive, but it's just a part of the community.
Thanks.
Sir, you've already talked, we're gonna go.
I need to ask him a question. I didn't realize that that was gonna be a detention pond.
How deep is that going to be?
So that, that's for an engineer to size out. And so, as we're sizing that out, it goes into that equation, right? How much are we collecting versus how much can we expel into the city infrastructure? Those answers are not, that's not a question that we would typically answer at this preliminary stage.
So you're gonna back that dependent detention pond right up against the existing homes that's right there?
It'll be right up against the existing home, I think you might be struggling with a little bit of scale here. However, this is not gonna be this massive water feature. From just a financial feasibility perspective, we would like it not to be so large. We're really planning for this to actually be a nice aesthetic thing for the community as we have that walking bike path that we've made, the continue from the proposed road on into Sunset Park, to have tree-lined.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have all these people walking by that detention pond. But I just say it's a safety factor, I didn't realize it was gonna be a pond. I'm not for the pond, but I'm not gonna jump up on the table and scream and holler.
Okay, others that wish to ask Mr. Brandon a question, please come forward. Those who wish to speak about the proposed plan?
Where is an H O A? Where do they live? Do they, how do they govern?
Yes, ma'am. That's a good question, they have to be a part of the community. And so, what will happen is, once we establish the H O A, there'll be a funding exercise as we build the homes, we'll fund the initial H O A. When you, when you think of H O A fees, you wanna keep them as low as possible, but you wanna make sure any common facilities can be maintained, right? And so you don't ever want this, this detention pond to grow up and be overgrown and unsightly. And so that's where your H O A dues are gonna come from, any common ground. So we'll establish the bylaws, we'll establish a procedure in which the bylaws can be amended by the resident. And then it will be the residents who we will elect themselves, a general election, and then they, there'll be a president, treasurer, secretary, and then they will govern their community similar. I know the his, the beautiful historic district that's around there, I'm pretty sure they have an H O A and I'm sure it's probably governed by.
And considering the H O A, City Council has also had discussions with staff about limiting the ability of these homes to become rental homes for a set period of time, I don't know, was it twenty years?
I'm not sure, I'll have to go back on that, but that is, that is an important piece of.
Oh, as, but that is part of the H O A and something that we've discussed as part of City Council. I'm sorry if I didn't introduce myself earlier, I'm a moniker, I'm a member of City Council.
But to your point, you know, really with this, we're coming forward and saying, I think that's been a challenge is, you know, non-armor-occupied pro- property here in town and some of the issues that that has with upkeep. And so, we wanna delete with a little bit of leadership and say, okay, how do we not make this come to that? To be honest with you, I don't think anybody is making a four hundred thousand dollar home or rental property frankly, so it might be in excess. But it's, it is appropriate, we felt, and it's something that, again, safeguard and values of the folks who'll be in the community and the folks that live around the community now.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, please come forward, we'll swear you in. We're interested in your comments, please come forward. Once again, I'll ask if there's anyone else wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. This is a public hearing, so we want to hear your comments. Any other comments from anyone tonight? Any other questions for Mr. Brandon before I close the public hearing?
I have one question. So I have to come up here today and I understand it, I understand it, not telling me anymore.
If you had to work in that access road of which we've seen, which we have seen for a hundred years and which I've seen for twenty-five years, we're creatures of habit, I see a lot of people walk up and down there. That's my buffer between me and you. It gives me a little bit elbow space, space to leave my place the way it is and your place to be the way you want it to be. If you had to work in a little bit of space there, six feet, seven feet, whatever, would that be a problem working it into that plan?
And so, I, I think what we tried to do is work it in in an alternative fashion that would serve the surrounding area and the community.
Here's the, here's the problem though, is that I see so many people with their, it's, the path of least resistance is normally the path that we all take. The path, walking down your proposed road and down and circle back around and back around and turn to the bicycle and whatever, I question that. When I've got a bike path, five or six feet, something like that, plus what I'm used to and the, and the communities used to, you want to fit into the community, we want you to fit into the community, but we would like to have a little thought power in there too. And, and I'm asking for just a little bit of space there. I'm all for your project, I mean, you know how I feel about compaction, but the point is, is that we would just like a little space there.
No, I, I, I certainly hear you. The only thing that we have to be mindful of is the future homeowners too and how they might feel of having that kinda go through their backyard. Alley systems are, are interesting beasts, they were very popular at one time. It seems as we've gone to attached garages and things of that nature, that has become a little unpopular. I'll, I'll consider anything, and so, certainly we'll, we'll circle back if, once we see, I don't even have that located on this drawing to see how much of their yard we would be eating up. But one of the other things too that we have to be mindful of is, I don't wanna take away from their yard to have.
Well, you're talking about how big the backyards are.
Yeah, they are, they definitely are, but when you put, you know, ten and twelve foot bike path or access way, I don't know how wide that is today. But when you have that back there, it certainly cuts.
Well, I look for the city to protect us and, and you to get what you want, and there's, right now, I feel like we're not getting much of what we want, and you're getting all that you want. Now, that's just my feeling, and I'm not angry with you because of it.
No, and I understand that's your perspective.
I'd like a little give and take here. You have a good day.
I was gonna say, sir, you can also express your comments before City Council as well. Thank you very much. Okay, all right, so, anyone else wishing, I know I've asked this, I'm gonna, I wanna finalize this one more time. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Do we have anyone else that wishes to speak? If you're going to speak, you're gonna need to come forward and let me swear you in. So let, let me, state your name and address for the record.
Tony Toman, one seventeen Belmont.
You swear the testimony you're about to give to the board's truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do, I think. I just have a couple of questions. Are you buying the property from the city or are they giving it to you, or how's that working?
So it will be an exchange, I'm not quite sure the, the number, but I'm pretty sure it's, it's, it's next to giving it to us.
Okay.
For the purposes of this.
And, and is there any advantages as far as, like, putting the roads in, is that all you, or is that?
Yeah, so we're, we're responsible for the improvement of the land.
Okay. Okay. And, and I'm in that, the top right corner there, where the retention, detention pond, whatever it's gonna be. And the way that swale is up and round in there, and all that water, doesn't, that retention pond is not gonna help me at all. It's gonna force more water back towards my way. We have a, a storm sewer on the back of our property on that access road that used to work, and then when they put the system in for Sunset, now it doesn't drain, they, they couldn't find out where it went to. So somehow it, it doesn't drain, that's why it takes three days for it to drain. So the way that topography on, on the, the four or five lots that are there, that back up to that, that's all just gonna slide right down into Sunset and flood all that. That's all I'm gonna say.
And so, all the water that's being collected on, on the impervious structure, so you gotta think about it. From the rooftops.
Right. All runs downhill?
Well, no, it's gonna be tied into a stormwater system. So, rooftop collects it, gets tied into the stormwater system.
I thought stormwater couldn't, couldn't go, I mean, like, rooftops couldn't go into stormwater? Had to be.
Nope, nope, so that gets tied into the main road, and then the, the road itself, impervious structure, all that water gets collected. So, what you'll see is a much more efficient collection of water, and then it's detained. And that way, it doesn't actually lick off into the surrounding area. So my expectation is that this will be an improvement. And I'll, you know, I'll see too, is that when we design it, it'll be exactly that.
Okay, you say so. Thank you.
Sir, before you leave, could you give me your contact information? I'll have an engineer reach out to you about your detention, the stormwater.
If, if for some reason it's not working, we wanna figure out why.
Am I correct that the city has given you this land, is that what I heard?
Is that what I heard?
They did attest on that. We started, we started building something that used to do it and then somehow we had all storm sewers there.
Yes, it's part of the deal that the city has worked out with some of these properties that we own is that the cost to maintain these properties is in excess of what, you know, the city is, is interested in doing. So, you know, signing over these properties is, is saving us money, but it's also creating new residents in the city which contribute to our tax base and so the advantage to the city in, in signing over the property at a small or nominal cost for some of these infill development sites is that, that, that they benefit the city more as developed properties than the costs that we incur to maintain them. But that's just a general idea about city-owned properties. Does that answer your question, Greg?
He answered it, but I, I, I just, I'm, I'm surprised that the city's just giving this away because he's going to be selling these homes for 300K apiece or whatever. I just, it doesn't seem like good business sense to the city from, in my opinion.
Yeah, the city's not in the business of building and developing properties in this way either, so that's, you know.
You're responsible for all the roads, the million dollar.
Okay, well that makes sense.
Yeah.
But we've, we've put out similar requests for proposals for the old high school site and the Lincoln School site and I believe that the city is currently working on developing a, a, a pretty well compiled list of all of the infill sites that exist throughout the city that are prime for development that the city owns that could be developed as properties or could be sold as side lots in the side lot program.
I'll need to swear you in, ma'am, please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Deb Hosman, 13 Kenwood Drive.
You swear the testimony, you're about to give the board's truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do. I just have some questions. And looking at proposed road, will there be on-street parking allowed on any side of the proposed road?
And so we don't regulate where people can park, that will be a part of the city's responsibility in telling us, this road was designed in a way that far exceeds what you guys would have on Kenwood or Belmont.
Okay, so.
It's, I think it's, I don't want to say triple, but at least double the size, I think it's a 50-foot road that we're proposing, so certainly that's an option.
Okay, because we don't want them looking on Kenwood for parking, that's why.
Well, I hear you.
There's enough parking where it's going on in Kenwood. The other question I had was, the HOA, potential of 20 members, they realized just 20 members, hands-off, no dictating to surrounding streets, Belmont or Kenwood, and would not try to impose any HOA regulations that could not spread into our, our street.
We wouldn't be able to do that, so the way that HOAs get their governing power are, are covenants and restrictions.
Mm-hmm.
And so there's a restriction that's put on the land and, and that's how, since I don't own your land, I can't restrict it.
Okay.
Or encumbered in that way, so there would not be this, you know, contagion of HOA rules.
Let them have it then. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, any other questions for Mr. Brandon before I close the public hearing? Anyone wishing to speak in favor or against, please come forward one last time. Okay, hearing done, I will close the public hearing and we'll ask for staff recommendations. Thank you, Ms. Brandon.
Sorry for speeding through those slides so quickly. Based on the staff report provided, staff recommends approval of the preliminary development plan to construct 20 single-family homes at 2701 Central Avenue. City Council would need to review the development plan and map amendment as a public hearing at their next regular meeting on June 20th, 2023.
James, I got a question for you. Can you go back to the slide that shows the, the plan, the city plan that blue on it?
The original plan that Mr. Brandon provided.
You, you presented it.
Okay.
Keep going, I'm looking at it on this screen, when you get to it, I'll say something. One more. Ah, it's purple, my bad. So this is the plan that was bounced around, is it two years ago, whatever it's been, but this is, this was initially supposed to be small business? Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, it's a special interest area, the, the whole entire purple area is a special interest area and we have eight different ones within the city. Vision to continue movement from downtown that services and receives support from the surrounding neighborhoods. The corridor has two large-scale redevelopment opportunities through reimagining the old Roosevelt School Site, formerly Lincoln School Site into a premier mixed residential development. So the whole entire purple area is supposed to be mixed residential.
Okay.
So it could be, it, it could be, I wasn't here for the comprehensive plan, so I, I don't want to.
Is, is, does that meet what this plan is?
It would.
How's it mixed?
The whole entire site needs, is ideal set for mixed residential. So we could have a, a mix of businesses, we could have single-family homes, we could have a mixture of both, we could have retail on the first floor and you could have residential on floors higher. Once we get closer towards the end over here, this is all residentially zoned, so it's currently, it's R3, which is residential anyways, it's just that this whole entire area is, is meant for mixed residential development. As I mentioned earlier, over here is B2 and B3, which is a little bit more of your intense business uses. If you want to think of like a B3 as a Jeffy Lube would be a good example. It is a commercial business, but it's a little bit more intense, there's a lot more traffic and B1 transitions into a little bit more of like lighter retail, B2s, restaurants and, and a mixture of both. So the whole entire site's meant for mixed residential.
Deliberation among the board? Questions, concerns?
Needs approval for the plan development amendment and zone change.
Yep, this, this site's currently zoned as R. I don't know if they're listening.
We're not voting on that.
No, I know, but if they've already changed, how do they, is that the process?
Usually they change the zoning and then they do.
Roger, any comments, anything? We've had.
I'm, I'm good with.
Maybe if I add in that the current, so the current subject property is currently zoned R3. So below us, we have, in the Highlands Historic District, we have R2, which is a lower density residential. In Kenwood, Sunset Place, and this property currently right here, it's R3, which is a little bit more dense. And then over here, off of Franklin Street and Belmont Street, we have R4, which is the highest density residential that we currently have. So when we look at the comprehensive plan, it is the, that is, what I'm showing you is the future land use map. So we had our consultants come in, I think they started back in 2018 or 2019 and they worked for several years with the city and the community, idealizing what the future could be. Currently, the zoning is for residential and what the comprehensive plan use map said for that whole entire area, running from university, actually from our downtown core through university, all the way to Sunset Park is just a very special interest area. It is an area that we need to keep a close eye on, but they're idealizing mixed use. So anything from business and/or residential and/or both at the same time. Currently, the zoning is residential.
Well, it's confusing when it says, the project will need approval by the city council for plan development, map amendment and zone change. Is there going to be a zone change or has that already been done? It doesn't sound like it.
No, it hasn't, so.
It's confusing, the way that says, we'll need approval on the agenda.
Right.
So it sounds like we needed a zone change, but we don't.
So this is no different than any other plan development that we've seen in the, in the last year and a half I've been here. I think this is the fourth or fifth. So as a plan development comes through, it comes through in two different paths. First off, it starts here at Planning Commission and then city council will also see it. They'll have a first initial public hearing, which the public will come and speak at, and they'll have a second one in which they'll vote. Your voting tonight will be, will pass off to city council for recommendation. So it kind of starts off in two different paths. You guys are kind of approving the site in the idealized plan that will then move forward, that is preliminary in nature, and they're also going to do a zoning map amendment or zone change. And all that means is that you're, you're changing it from an R3 to a planned development. So it means that there is a planned development associated with this site. So if we looked at his previous site plan, I believe sites one through four and then 11, 12, 13, 14 all meet current zoning. So if you wanted to, if Mr. Brandon wanted to build the, on the roads and build those homes, he could, currently, right now under the, under the current zoning. Homes five through nine and then 16 through 20 don't meet current zoning, so then that's part of the reason why he's here. But the, the plan development, the, the plan would force him to abide by this in the future. So he would have to build the detention basin, he would have to build the hiker biker path that is going through. It, it's a plan that then is associated with this piece of property.
It also allows the city within the requirements for the HOA and the limitations on, you know, having rentals in this, in this plan development, there are advantages to using a plan development as opposed to a zoning change.
Yep, that's correct. Thank you.
Got you. Okay, so we have a. I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary development plan.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Mr. Metz?
Sam Cornwall?
Yes.
Roger Daniel?
Yes.
Greg Gimmert?
No.
Paul Ninni?
Yes.
Todd Moore?
Yes.
This moves us to our next case this evening, conditional use. This is a request by applicant Kyle, Kyle Ghent for approval of conditional use to allow indoor manufacturing at Union Road. I'll let Mr. Metz give us a review of the facts.
So tonight before us, we have a conditional use application by applicant Kyle Ghent to allow for indoor manufacturing at Union Road known as parcel ID 0704476008. Property is a total of five acres. For the city of Middletown zoning map and Middletown Development Code, the property is located in the BCF district where indoor manufacturing is considered a conditional use that requires review and approval by the planning commission. Here's the property currently. The subject property is currently zoned BCF, Business Center Flex. The purpose of the BCF sub-district is to provide for light, clean industrial uses that are, that complement the remaining business uses throughout the BC district and allow limited residential development and protect existing and future residential areas from the impacts of the industrial development. Here's where the current site is being proposed. Development code restricts indoor manufacturing and production to a conditional use within the BCF sub-district. You can see this on the bottom line on the screen. Here's your BCF column down here, indoor manufacturing is conditional use. The comprehensive plan land use map designates this property as an employment mixed use. The employment mixed use is defined as primarily office with high-tech industrial, medical or other similar uses with secondary uses that include commercial, service and residential. On May 13th, 2020, the city planning commission approved the conditional use application for indoor manufacturing at the property located along Union Road, same parcel ID. Not sure if this seems familiar, but it's a, it's a very comparable and similar, I mean, it's almost identical project, same company, same use, everything else. I'll let the applicant come up and explain why there was a hold. I've attached the outcome letter with the illustration of the site originally was and then the original site plan. Here's their current proposed site plan. Here's their current elevation. Decisions on a conditional use application shall be based on consideration of the following review criteria. All conditions, you, all conditional uses shall be subject to review under the criteria of this section as applicable and may be subject to additional use specific standards. The proposed conditional use is established as an allowed conditional use in the applicable zoning district. The proposed use is consistent with the spirit, purpose and intent of the master plan and the general purpose of this code. The proposed use complies with any use specific standards as may be established for the use. Any building or structure constructed, reconstructed or altered as part of the conditional use in a residential zoning district shall, to the maximum extent feasible, maintain the exterior appearance of residential buildings or of the type otherwise permitted and shall have suitable landscaping, screening and fencing wherever deemed necessary by planning commission. The, the proposed use will comply with all the applicable development standards except as specifically altered by the planning commission in the approved conditional use. The proposed use will be harmonious with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity and that such use will not change the essential character of the neighbor or the same area. The proposed use will not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, equipment and conditions of operation that will be detrimental to any person's property or the general welfare by reason of excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, glare, odors. Their circulation on and access to the property shall be so designed as not to create interference with traffic on surrounding public thoroughfares. The design of the building structures and site will not result in destruction, loss or damage of a natural scenic or historic feature of major importance. The proposed use will not impede the normal or orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Wherever no specific areas of frontage, height or setback requirements are specified and provision for a specific conditional uses, then such use shall be subject to the site development standards for the applicable zoning district. Additional criteria and conditions. The planning commission shall be authorized to waive or modify requirements that apply to the conditional use as may be necessary to achieve compatible development with adjacent land areas as well as in the interest of the community in general where the planning commission finds that such waiver or modification will further the protection of the general welfare, protect individual property rights, ensure that the, that the conditional use will meet the intent and purposes of this code. The planning commission may also impose additional conditions, guarantees and safeguards as it deems necessary to protect the general welfare and individual property rights and ensure that the conditional use will meet the intent and purposes of this code. Per the Middletown Development Code, Table 1226-1, notes requirements. Public notice was published in the paper and letters were sent to all property owners within 200 feet of the property. All letters and emails that were received were forwarded to the planning commission. As always, the construction plans need to comply with the engineering manual of design. I, just to recap and provide any additional information or questions that you might have, this is for an indoor manufacturing and research development facility on the east end of the city off of Union Road. This was previously approved. I'll let the applicant delve into a little bit more of what they do, they can speak to that better than I can. This was previously approved right before COVID. The project was put on hold because of COVID and then now it's coming back. The research and development aspect of the use of the property is already approved. The only thing that you'd be approving would be for the manufacturing of the indoor manufacturing of the facility. As I mentioned, it was previously approved two years ago. And that ends, that ends my staff report and the applicant is here.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Metz? Okay, we'll open the public hearing now. Please come forward if you wish to speak in favor of the variance, please come forward. Does the applicant wish to speak on behalf of the proposal?
You don't have to, if you like to, you can. And then just go to the, go to the normal bias, please.
Just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Sean Schnee, 346 Wexford Way, Monroe, Ohio.
Thank you, sir. You swear the testimony, you're about to give the board's truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do. So originally when we applied, we were mostly focused on R and D activities for medical devices. Our company is rather large and we, we are, we have companies in Hyderabad, India, as well as Austria and Germany. So our purview has actually changed a little bit too in manufacturing and that's why we're looking for light industrial instead of R and D, well, in lieu of R and D as well.
Could you briefly describe your process?
Sure. We do mainly injection molding processes.
Plastic?
Manufacturing, yes, plastic. So we, we make tools for pharma, we make tools for medical device, MEMS. We make tools for, uh, medical device, uh, MEMs, uh, small injection molding components, packaging, caps, closures, fast-moving consumer goods.
Is there any wastewater issues or air issues that we need to be concerned about?
So closed-loop water systems like water towers, et cetera, that keep the machines cool. We use, uh, mainly electric machines. So we, we barely have any wastewater at all. Otherwise, they're all self-contained.
Just going back to last year, is there any substantive change that you're proposing here that wasn't in the original application?
Uh, no, not really.
How many jobs you looking at because of this?
Right now, we have a facility in Westchester. We employ twenty. In the, uh, year of five, we're looking at about eighty.
Good for you. Hallelujah.
Thank you.
A couple come in the middle town. We're taking one from Westchester.
Yep, definitely.
Now, one of the hardship criteria for use, um, is kind of similar question, uh, Mr. Daniel. Any, any type of emissions or anything like that would create odors or smells or anything?
No, no.
Any other questions? This is almost identical to what you, if not identical to what you proposed.
Maybe a little larger, as far as the building is concerned.
You're not actually, uh, making the plastic pellets that you're going to use for the injection?
We, we just, we take the pellets, and then we put it in our molds, and we make the product.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the proposed variance? Please come forward. Just can't get anyone to speak tonight, can we? Okay, anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. I'll ask for staff recommendation.
Based on the staff report provided, staff recommends approval of the conditional use application for Union Road, Middletown, Ohio four five zero four four to be utilized as indoor manufacturing. This, this plan is compatible with our future land use map, and it's compatible with, um, the current area now and the zoning.
Well, we have staff recommendation. Any other questions before a call for a motion?
Motion for approval?
Second.
Todd Moore?
Yes.
Paul Ninni?
Yes.
Greg Gimmerick?
Yes.
Roger Daniel?
Yes.
Sam Cornwall?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. I'll email you guys tomorrow.
Okay, that brings us now, uh, to older new business. I guess, Mr. Metz, you're gonna address an issue tonight?
Yes. Um, tonight I was asked to speak on the adjustment of living square footage. So currently, living square footage is, um, a minimum of seventeen hundred square feet for two stories and fifteen hundred square feet for any single-family dwelling under two stories or, um, a, a single-story home. Now, currently, if, um, if it is requested, we could provide an administrative waiver of up to ten percent. That would bring down, um, a single-family home as small as fifteen hundred, or one thousand three hundred and fifty square feet. I believe the, the question I'm supposed to be asking is, um, gauging the temperature of what would the Planning Commission's appetite be or interest be for lowering the, um, livable floor area and lot coverage from minimum of fifteen hundred square feet or thirteen fifty with administrative waiver down to twelve hundred, and then additionally, um, removing the ten percent administrative waiver possibility. So, chapter twelve twenty-six, eleven administrative waivers. This covers applicability, which is in, um, subsection B, and I'll read that for you. The Development Code administrator may grant administrative waivers for any applicable, for any area or dimensional regulation that does not exceed ten percent of the applicable minimum or maximum regulation. Aerial and dimensional regulations include but are not limited to minimum front, side, and rear setback, minimum height of structures, maximum sign height, maximum sign area, et cetera. Um, I'll additionally also read the review criteria. Decisions on an administrative waiver shall be based on consideration of the following criteria. The waiver, waiver will allow the proposed development to reflect the predominant development character of surrounding similar uses and properties. Special circumstances that exist that make the precise compliance with the subject standards impractical or unreasonable. Three, the waiver request is minor in nature. Four, the request does not substantially deviate from the development character of the surrounding properties. And five, the waiver request does not deviate from the overall purpose of this code or the intent and objective of the original regulation. So following, um, review criteria from subsection D, steps four and five, I'd like to briefly go into, um, a large project that I have been working on for like the last six months. Um, this has been categorizing every single vacant lot that the City of Middletown owns, which is well over four hundred different parcels. We have been going through, by we, me, I've been going through all the different parcels. I've been finding the zoning district, identifying if it's in historic district, what the neighborhood is, um, who's the property owner, which is either the City of Middletown, um, City of Middletown, Ohio Land Revitalization, um, and then identifying the acres. As you can see, the average acre is somewhere between zero point one one to zero point one seven. That is smaller than the, uh, the permitted lot size that, um, was shown previously. So the lots currently don't fit what a single-family dwelling would be able to meet, nor did they meet any of the site development standards here. We do have what's called non-conforming lot of records, which almost all of these properties are considered a non-conforming lot of record, meaning that most of them are forty feet wide width, and then anywhere between seventy to about a hundred and thirty feet deep. When working on this project, I was told that, um, I, I need to gather all this information, and we're wrapping it up right now, and that the city does intend to, um, have the property developed. I'm not sure how exactly, but I do know that if we follow the same mass and scale of the current neighborhoods, these homes would struggle to meet the current site development standards. Now, I, we don't need to vote. I was just told to, um, present you with this information, gauge your, um, gauge your interest, and then report back to, um, my senior staff. About. Adjusted, I don't know. I know that this was brought up prior. Um, I, I was new. So almost a year and a half ago, this was brought up. Um, this sounds familiar. At that point in time, I believe the Planning Commission wanted to, um, identify what was the average lot size. What are these homes going to be? What is the average lot size, and how feasible would it be to build homes on them that would meet the current standards? And that was kind of a task that we were given, and I've been working diligently on it for the last six or seven months.
Are there any lots that are able to be developed? I mean, you said they're not big enough. How many out of the four hundred?
Well, uh, there's two different facets to that. We have all of these homes, majority of these homes could technically be built under what's considered a non-conforming lot of record, meaning that they have to build a home that would meet the, um, livable square footage, which almost all of them would have to ask for the administrative waiver down to thirteen fifty, and then to meet the setbacks to the greatest extent feasible. Now, there are, majority of those homes, majority of these properties could be built to that. Now, we probably have, out of the three hundreds or so parcels, not parcels, incorrect. We have close to five hundred parcels, close to about the three hundred, what we'd consider a buildable lot. I would say, um, less than two dozen of them would be, um, meet the site development standards as is for their current zoning district.
Without a waiver.
Without a waiver.
Without a waiver.
Yeah, well, I would just mean like lot size-wise, because some of these parcels, um, in, in city planning, we have something called mass and scale. It is all set, all neighborhoods have to follow a certain setback to, um, side yard setback, front yard setback, et cetera, to meet, and house size, and I can really get deep into the weeds, but it presents a mass and scale. Uh, mass and scale is what makes a neighborhood, a neighborhood. It's what makes the Highlands, the Highlands. It's what makes South Main Street, South Main Street, et cetera. There are parcels there that were, you know, this one's zero point zero three, um, acres, and this one's zero point one one, and this one's zero point zero two or three or whatever. And I was, I combined them into one lot. So it's somewhat of an irregular shape, but it would allow the house to be built to conforming standards without an administrative waiver or without anything additional.
So this is leading towards a much, a, a whole bunch of much smaller homes being built in the city. Is that what I'm hearing?
I, I wasn't given any directive other than to present my findings to you and then pr, present, um, both what the current site development standards are and then potentially gauging your interest in lowering the square footage um, in combination with removing the administrative waiver. I was just supposed to do that and, and report back.
Do you have any, uh, market data? Any market data?
Any market data?
As, as far as the demand for smaller homes like this?
Like, that's something that.
In homes, people left just in time for this conversation.
Yeah, well.
Well, a, a couple things here. In terms of how many homes we, are these homes that were a result of foreclosure in the land bank? Is this what we currently have within the land bank, or is this absent land bank? Kind of a combination of factors here.
Some of them were from the land bank that were provided to us. Some of them, um, I think, I remember seeing some land bank-owned properties. Majority of it is City of Middletown, Ohio properties. These are properties that we are currently maintaining.
Right.
Through, um, through mowing, trash pickup, et cetera.
Yeah. I think this is just, you know, again, this is a lot of information coming all at one time, since just trying to figure, you know, we think about this housing question here in Middletown. We've wrestled with this for a while. For me, it's more about what is the actual plan as we look. You look at some of these houses where they're located. We have a number that are located very, and they're, they're neighborhoods is what we're talking about. These are isolated in particular neighborhoods. You know, certainly, I think that we have to accommodate at some point future development for smaller lots. I think that's, cities struggle with this as a planning process at all times, but a blanket, a struggle, I guess, where we say, hey, do we just need a blanket rule to do twelve hundred? Because what's good in one particular area doesn't necessarily mean it's good in another. And when we start to have a blanket rule that says, you know, I mean, for me, this needs to be a little more comprehensive. We got a data set here now. You can then take from this data, and you have to figure out what type of housing are we aiming at within this larger area? It needs a more robust housing plan.
Absolutely, and, and one of the key points I forgot to mention, I'm glad I remembered. They asked, um, additionally, if, if there was not appetite or interest in lowering the square footage down to, um, twelve hundred citywide, this could be for strictly info lots that would be pre-designated, and these info lots could be brought down to twelve hundred square feet for a one-story. And that, that would only fix it for certain neighbors. Absolutely. Uh, majority of these homes are within three to four neighborhoods. So as Mr. Gimmerick mentioned, this is not, um, this is not citywide. This is more of an, um, an isolated area.
Is this something that we could then plug into a map view and see where all these lots are? Because I think that that would be something that could be visually beneficial.
We do have that, actually. Um, it's, it's, we actually have it, um, viewable online. So then I had to take this information and kind of work backwards to get this, and then I was going to, um, group them. So then we were going to try to figure out, okay, um, I'm not satisfied with how much. I, I, I would like to present you guys with more detailed and easier to, um, digest information. I mean, we're looking at several hundred lots. It's kind of hard to look at and then look in an Excel sheet and try to figure that out.
It certainly helps to understand the gauge of Planning Commission's interest in changing those set standards.
What's the alternative? What's the alternative? Keep mowing the grass?
They all.
Just let them sit and rot?
They all get turned over to the side lot program and could be purchased by adjacent property owners who would, they can either prove that they've been, um, maintaining that property through the side lot program. So if the city hasn't been cutting that property and the adjacent property owner has and has been maintaining them, that's a factor in how much the, how mu, what the price is set to that neighbor for that parcel of property.
But i, is there demand for that? Do we have property owners that are asking to buy their side lots?
There's been a lot of.
Put a pause on the program because there was so many properties through the land bank that had become property of the City of Middletown over the last five, ten-plus years. Um, and so council, I believe that was something that we've done in the last couple of years, is put a hold on the side lot program so that we could do this.
The side lot program has been put on hold since I've been here.
Yeah, I think it was maybe twenty twenty-two. I don't, I.
At least twenty twenty-one. Um, just, just to follow with what you mentioned, the, there is a vacant lot list that is viewable on the city's website. That is something that you could go and look at right now.
But those are sites that wouldn't even be considered for this.
No, that, that's where we got all of our information. Yeah, and.
Can we anticipate one builder coming in and wanting to build on numerous lots, or is this going to be a, a lot-by-lot decision?
There's been interest in both, from my understanding.
Would the idea be to, to combine some of these lots in any way? I mean, look at eighteen, eighteen, eighteen. You've got, you know, you've got three lots listed. Is there a way that, you know, is there going to be some, some planning around that in terms of, you know, not necessarily putting just, I, I'm sure these are all non-conforming, that we're back built. We've dealt with this for a while, but I, a, a couple things, just off the top of my head, you know. Again, taking the data you have and kind of putting together a more comprehensive housing plan, I think that serves the city well. But, you know, this is something certainly that has an impact economically as well as on the district, the school district itself. So I sit on the Planning Commission as a member of the district, um, but at the same time, you know, this would be something that we certainly would want to broaden this discussion with Middletown City Schools, um, because, you know, some of our buildings right now are at different capacity, and there's a lot of questions here. But, um, again, I, you know, where I struggle with this, and I, I'm just speaking not just as a school board member, but as a community member, one of the things that I've often heard folks complain about is, well, we've got these, these lots, but I hope to God we don't just fill them all back up with tiny homes. You know, that's a question that council has to address. We're just trying to do our role.
But you're not going to build a really nice big home right next to two little small homes either.
No, but I'm saying that's.
There's, nobody's going to want to buy it.
Uh, just from a planning perspective, though, I mean, I think there needs to be more, you've got a lot of data here with these lots. You got to figure out a way to really market those lots in a different way.
Well, I think you just mentioned that there's opportunity to combine a few of these lots.
Yes, so there, I've already combined dozens of these lots to try to make them as, as large as feasibly possible while still maintaining the integrity of the neighborhood. So, um. So I guess I'll try to answer some questions backwards. I think I answered yours, but with Mr., um, Mr. Moore. So some of these, a lot of Middletown is built on thirty-five-foot-wide lots, up to fifty-foot-wide lots. And if we go through, if we go through and, and, um, it's, you know, forty-foot-wide, 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 a hundred and twenty-foot-wide, forty-foot-wide, forty-foot-wide, then we are then struggling to try, we would potentially struggle to find somebody to build a home there and also buy it or occupy it. Whereas if we are able to maintain the same mass and scale, you're able to keep the integrity of the neighborhood. And that's usually, uh, you know, that's a, it's a city planning principle of trying to maintain what is there. And, and I think a good component to this would be to go and, and hold public input meetings and talk to the neighbors and see what they would like. All these homes are, all these lots are within three to four neighborhoods. I think it would be ideal to have these neighbors get to come here and speak and get. speak and get to talk to us and, and figure out what they want and what they would like to see within their neighborhood. Most of them have been there their whole entire life. And then going back to you, Mr. Noonie, you asked me if, if these would be going to all one builder or if these would be going to multiple builders. I am unsure. This is, I was just directed to ask you about your interest in lowering the minimum livable square footage in combination with the information that I've been researching.
I can see somebody coming in here to him, building a bunch of these little small homes and renting them all out.
Yeah, that's, that's one of those policy questions, you know, that's a real concern is that at one time, we had an abundance of section eight homes. Then we had the foreclosures. We've gone through that kind of process. But again, I'm not saying I have the answer here. I certainly understand Paul's concern too, but...
Well, there's nothing wrong with rental property as long as it's well-maintained and it's not so-called section eight.
Right. Rentals and section...
You know, if somebody wants to build a house and, and rent it out or buy a house and rent it out, I mean, can't stop them. Just have to maintain the, the quality of the, of the house itself so that you don't have...
I understand that, but if you look at this list in these three areas, James is saying, those are predominantly heavily rental areas.
I don't want to be the guy that brings more section eight into town. I'm saying none of this.
Just really...
I look at what's going on in schools and all that stuff and, you know, if you, you want to build it, you have a family move in there, they're going to take care of it or, or an elderly couple, I'm all for that. But I guarantee you got some hawk looking at this list that's wanting to build a bunch of homes and do a bunch of low-cost rental. And I just, I just think it's, I think Middletown's done that already and it didn't work out so well.
Well, that's why you have building standards, so you don't let them go in and build a bunch of shacks and rent them out to low-income housing.
We're going to want to say it's fifteen hundred. I say leave that alone then.
I don't have a problem with the ten percent. I don't think that's a big deal.
That's our end there, right? That's our end there.
Well, that would have to be requested. In, in the development code, I would be considered the development code administrator, but that would be something that I would go and talk to our development director about, my department director about before approving.
So, so James, just looking at this list and again, I'm sorry, guys, my brain's fried from that first case, okay? Trying to hold it together up here, but when, you've got a lot here, okay? But in terms of putting this into some broader comprehensive plan, I mean, you've presented it to us tonight. I mean, can we have a little more as you develop the plan? Do we have to make a decision to say, hey, you know, go for twelve hundred or give you that green light tonight? Can you at least assemble a plan that, you know, and GIS or however you go about using that, that software to create a more comprehensive approach? But, I mean, we do have a lot of lots, I understand that, but at the same time, I mean, you know, for me, I would definitely want to see how you would want to do a broader plan before I would just say, hey, I'm in favor of doing something.
Absolutely.
You're not asking for a decision tonight on anything, are you?
No. This, this is just to, I was just asked to come down here and, and talk to you about this and gauge interest. And Mr. Moore, as you mentioned, this is, this is, this project that I've been working on is just to try to figure out how can we best identify the areas? Because we have an interactive map that's online. Any of you guys can look it up right now on your phone or you could check it out tonight, whenever. And, and it's really cool because you could check by property, you could check parcel numbers, you could check, sometimes they have lot size information there, sometimes they don't. What I've been working on is trying to take a visual and then work backwards. So, you can see something and you can see all the red is congregated within one area of the city or primarily one area of the city. And then I'm just trying to get that visual information, bring it back and try to figure out, okay, if we're going to break this up and we're going to, you know, whatever we'd like to do with this information, you know, let, let's try to put it into like a feasible way that we have something tangible rather than just something visual.
Well, if ten percent gets you to thirteen fifty, you could talk at twenty percent to get to twelve hundred. Twenty percent is a big, that's a big difference.
Yeah. What's the average square foot?
The, the average lot, I would, I would probably have to do like a, some type of formula, but I would say close to zero point one one acres to zero point one three acres.
I haven't been honored for a year and a half, but I know Dennis Beatty brought three or four or five of these lots to the ZBA asking for setback.
As possible, if you have regulations.
Gages. Because he wanted to build up, you know, build some things on there. He's a pretty reasonable person.
He did some good work.
I mean, pretty reputable.
Where these lots are though.
Builder.
They won't want to put...
We, like I said, we don't need an answer tonight. This is just gauging your interest. We can always come back to it and discuss it at a later time.
I would want to come back to it.
You said you would or would not?
I'm talking back to it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think to ask us to make it a sit-down, it's unfair.
We're looking for the temperature. If you didn't read me, hell no.
I think you have to take it on a case-by-case basis. Try to move forward slowly and, and don't give one developer the green light on everything.
And I'd let some of these land, these property owners that have been taking care of these lots, let them buy these lots. The city needs the money. You know what? Start getting rid of some of these things. We keep holding on to it and, and I, it just, some of the stuff I'm seeing just freaking boggles my mind.
Yeah, they used to offer these things for five hundred dollars.
You know what? Some, if you've got some couple out there...
It costs you more than that to maintain it.
Oh, I know it does.
If you've got some couple out there that's maintaining that lot like, hey, you give it to them for five hundred bucks, their value goes up, they're going to make it look nice. Now they'll put roses or whatever they want to put on there. It's a hell of, yeah. I mean, they could do some cool stuff with it, but what we do is we're holding back. Well, there's going to be somebody come along and give us this bullet that, oh, hey, look at all these homes we've built and they're going to be trash again. Hey, before I forget, this guy is Philip Brandon, pretty damn sharp. You ought to, in my opinion, you ought to point him to that property out by Miller's Ridge, that, that other company was so far off. My no was he should be pointed towards that and build a real neat community out there because what he's building is pretty sharp. So, just before I forget that.
A little black tin that come with the projections on, on the hill over there at the hospital.
Yeah, oh my God, I'm not...
Unfortunately, the city doesn't own either property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I know the city's pushing him towards Roosevelt. You know, I don't, I, it's fine, but I, I, I think that guy's a neat developer. We should, the city should be helping him, but...
Well, maybe you could do both.
Well, I'm telling James, I didn't want to do it in front of anybody. I didn't think that'd be appropriate, but I'm telling you, I think he's sharp and please share that with him. I'm sure he's wondering why the hell I said no. I don't, I don't, the other, my no on that, there's, there's some big drainage problems over in that area. The city needs to figure that out. And I, I, I know some, I've got some friends over there. Whenever it rains hard, they're getting flooded. So, something's going on over there. We're going to put another development in there and I guarantee we won't have that figured out as well as we should. Sorry to go backwards, guys.
Yeah, the Braille extension was supposed to be have mansions up on the hills with that landscaping and all this big housing projects just never, never fit, just all fizzled out.
Well, I live out there. It's not a mansion, but hell, the house next to me just sold for six fifty.
Well, I mean, if you go up, if you go down Braille Boulevard on the right-hand side of the road, there's, looks like there's hardly any development back in the woods.
Well, they put the school, yeah, they put that school up. Is that where you're talking? That far?
Well, not that far south. North. But over to the right, the, the, the pictures that I saw when I was on city council and we approved the Braille extension was to develop all that land with some really nice homes. Now, they, they've built some nice home, homes, but there's still a lot more acreage back there, I understand. Maybe it's just hard to develop because you got to get, put roads on the, going around hills and, you know.
That's going to develop. There's going to be houses back there eventually. That, that one, it can be developed. I just sharing with you, you ought to put a bug in that guy's ear, get him out there looking at it and see if the city can help him with that. Hell, put a bond together for him to buy the land or something.
Guys, that brings us to adjournment. All those in favor of adjournment, say hi.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's go home.
I almost didn't make this meeting. I had an emergency at the office.
I drove, I raced up seventy-five.
James, there's a Hershey bar there for somebody.